I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Present.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Fry.
Here.
Palmasano is absent. President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Palmasano is on city business today. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. And I know there are motions. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President.
Ma'am. 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 I will advise the audience that members of the public are welcome to attend these proceedings under Minnesota's open meeting law, but that the council rules require that those in attendance to refrain from any disruption to the council's ability to transact business of the government. Individuals who disrupt the council's meeting or who persist in disrupting the meeting will be required to leave the chamber. Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to follow the rules of our council. Please remove this lady.
Mr. Bickin.
I would like to move to suspend council rules to allow for public testimony.
Mr. Bickin, council rules do not permit public comments at council meetings.
I would like to move to effect council rules to allow for public testimony.
There's a motion to suspend council rules for public testimony. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. That fails. Council rules do not permit public comments at council meetings, Mr. Bickin, so I'm going to ask you to not speak. Please remove Mr. Bickin.
There are a lot of rules against the shooting of Jamar Clark, and there are rules against the conduct of the city and the police following that shooting. This is just another sign that the city is not ready to listen and not ready to take action on personal matters.
Ma'am, council rules do not permit public comments at council meetings. That happens at committee meetings. The council meeting is held to act on committee recommendations. Ma'am, would you please refrain from disrupting the council meetings? Please remove this lady. We'll continue with our agenda. Councilmember Yang, you have a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to amend the agenda to include, under new order of business, a proposal for the creation of an infill development work group.
Is there a second on that motion to amend the agenda? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Councilmember Reich, you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to amend the agenda to include, under order, new business, a notice of intent of an ordinance in many provisions relating to car sharing program. That item is before the council.
Okay. Councilmember Reich has moved to amend the agenda to include a notice of intent to introduce an ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that the car sharing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any discussion? Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. With that, the motion to amend, excuse me, accept the agenda as amended is in order.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and that first committee reporting is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. We have four items on our agenda. The first is an amendment to the City of Minneapolis Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan. The second is preliminary designation of community action agency for the city of Minneapolis as suburban Henepin Community Action. The third is Workplace Regulations Partnership Operating Principles. And the fourth is the Workplace Regulations Partnership Appointments. I will go ahead and move all four items, and I will note, I believe one of my colleagues has an amendment on item number four.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Glidden. She has moved the Committee of the Whole report of four items. Any discussion? Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm still actually waiting on my staff to give me.
I think it's been passed out.
Oh, it has? Okay.
Has it?
Last, no, sorry.
Ah, okay.
Madam President, I'm sorry, they're stuck at the clerk's desk.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President, you know, for this motion on Wednesday. I gave notice that I was on a present a motion before this body with regards to the Workplace Regulations Partnership Appointments. And, you know, for myself, looking at just the timeline of when this work group would report, it's a pretty quick timeline, and it also has the holidays in between, and so I just thought it would make some sense to put some alternates on there, just so that if, you know, folks are no-shows, that we can have alternates to it. So I'm moving to amend the membership of Workplace Regulations Partnership by adding a total of four alternate members to be appointed by the city council. Alternate members designated by the city council shall conform to stakeholder groups identified in the enabling motion, which includes employees or representatives of employees, employers and business associations. The four alternate members appointed by the city council shall be permitted to attend and participate in the business meetings and other proceedings of the partnership and shall have or perform any other duties that may be authorized by the partnership, except the ability to vote on formal proposals. Alternate members may cast a vote only in the absence of an official member when he or she is substituting for that member as a representative of a specific stakeholder group. And the following individuals are hereby appointed as alternate members of the Workplace Regulations Partnership. Stephanie Gaska as an employee representative, Abdi Rahman Kahin, employer, Sarah Webster Norton, employee, and Bruce Newstad, business association.
Councilmember Yang has moved an amendment to item four. Is there a second? There's a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Then, on the Committee of the Whole report, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to speak on this particular issue, the Workplace Regulations Partnership. I'm looking at the list, and I know that I've worked with you and council vice president Glidden on, I did work with you on trying to find a Latino business owner that could be a part of this process, and we had several conversations about the composition of this partnership and the goals and the different ways that we can engage folks. So I just wanted to state for the public record that I am supporting this late the way it is now, knowing that we had conversations about ensuring that we have smaller listening sessions and groups that will engage these specific focused and targeted groups to give us their feedback, whether they're immigrant-owned businesses, the healthcare industry, more low-wage employees, and definitely Spanish-speaking and Latino business owners. So I just wanted to say that that's the intention for me to support this today, acknowledging that there is no Latino business representation on here, but that we did agree to work on that throughout the process of this partnership group.
Thank you. Any further discussion then on the Committee of the Whole report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing seven items forward for approval this morning. Item one are the liquor business and gambling license applications. Item two is our 2015 housing revenue bond carry-forward entitlement. Item number three is consolidating and restructuring debt for Ashkenabe Wakaigun. Item four and five are the commercial community garden and community garden policy. Item number six are the levy for special assessments, and item number seven is authorizing the purchase of 30 West Lake Street for the purpose of trying to reopen Nicollet at Lake. With that, I'll move all items except for item four and five, as I understand Councilmember Gordon has amendments.
Okay. Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Report with items one, two, three, six, and seven. Any, four and five are taken off, so should we take a vote on that? We've got some discussion on the community garden.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to vote on everything except for four and five and then allow the amendments to proceed.
Okay. That's what we'll do then. So clerk will take the, call the roll on items one, two, three, six, and seven.
Councilmember.
I'm sorry, are people on those items? Councilmember Conno, are you on four and five, or?
Yes, and I'm going to let Councilmember Gordon go first with his amendment.
Okay. So is Councilmember Gordon, you're on four and five?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Fry?
Madam President, my comments and motion are also on number five.
Okay. Then we will take the roll on the Community Development Regulatory Services Report on items one, two, three, six, and seven.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Then on item four, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to move items four and five for approval, and also note that I support Councilmember Gordon's amendments and appreciate him coming to committee, speaking on this issue, giving us a heads-up, speaking on it at Committee of the Whole and working with a number of people in order to move those forward.
Okay. And Councilmember Gordon's amendments are in front of us. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. So they've already been moved, and they're properly before us? Were they moved as part of the report?
Yes, Madam Chair, I moved Councilmember Gordon's amendments forward.
All right, thank you very much. And there's actually amendment on number four and number five, and I'm not sure if we can take those both together, but they're identical. I'll just outline what they are, and then we can, if it's the will of the body, maybe we can vote on them at the same time, and we'll see how the discussion goes. But essentially, they do three things with the commercial gardens as well as the community gardens. The first is they would just ensure that the practices at these lots that we are leasing for growing would also follow our Pollinator Friendly City Resolution, which we passed recently, and also that a list of pesticides prohibited for use on these will be maintained by the Minneapolis Health Department. The second change would be to reduce the administrative fee from $100 to $50, and the third change would be clarifying that one application may be submitted for multiple parcels. And I'm happy to take questions or have any discussion on those.
Anyone have questions for Councilmember Gordon? Councilmember Conno? No?
I'm just putting myself in queue for my amendment.
Oh, okay. All right, wait on that. Any further discussion then on items four and five? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Councilmember Gordon and all others who are advocating for these great changes to this.
Okay. So Councilmember Conno, did you want to make an additional amendment?
Yes, this is the time for me to make this motion.
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. So the motion before you, my staff and the clerk's office has handed it out. It is pertaining to number four, to strike any mention of selling lots for commercial gardens except for the lots located in Ward nine, as listed in the handout.
Councilmember Goodman?
We need to vote on Councilmember Gordon's amendments prior to taking up another amendment.
I think you moved his, oh, I see.
Those are amendments to the main motion. I'd appreciate a vote on Councilmember Gordon's motions.
All right, all right. Councilmember Conno, I'm going to wait on your amendment. On Councilmember Gordon's amendment, then, amendments to both the commercial garden policy and the community garden policy. Clerk call the roll, or, excuse me, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Councilmember Conno, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. So the motion relates to amending item number four, and the motion to amend is to strike any mention of selling lots for commercial gardens as follows. The language reads, number four, strike any mention of selling lots for commercial gardens except for the lots located in Ward nine, as listed there in the handout.
Second.
The Councilmember Conno has moved an amendment to amend the recommendations to strike any mention of selling lots for commercials as follows, striking any mention of selling lots or commercial gardens except for a number of lots located in Ward nine. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would urge members of the council to vote against this amendment. When I spoke with Alfred Korth and Sherry Shookus this morning, who were desperately trying to reach me because they have communicated to Councilmember Conno that they do not support this, they described this as an administrative nightmare. So I would just say that, given that our staff don't support it, it didn't come through committee, it wasn't noticed to us at Committee of the Whole, and we got notice of it at 9:30 last night, that this needs far more work.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. So our office has been working with the homegrown Minneapolis table and the Subcommittee on Land Access for over two years on this policy initiative that Councilmember Fry had supported and helped us to have a discussion about this at the CDRS committee. The original intent came from a lot of Ward nine residents who are small business owners that dedicate themselves to urban farming, and also it's a connection that we have very strongly in the ninth ward to blight and to vacant lots that sit idle for years and years and years. And I know that not a lot of wards have those challenges. My ward is one that has that challenge, and we have a solution here to allow small business owners located in our neighborhoods and our communities to take over these lots, turn them into productive food production sites that provide jobs for people, that help address crime and blight in areas that are economically challenged. And so this is why I'm bringing this forward, to ensure that residents in the ninth ward and small businesses that benefit the entire city of Minneapolis can help us address blight through this small urban agriculture business model.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I do know that interest in how we could ultimately sell lots is something that has come up through the Food Council, and I know people have sometimes looked at sideyard options, because often what we do is we'll have a sideyard that the city owns, and we decide to offer that for sale to the property owner there. So this is something that there's great interest about and people want to do. I also understand that the committee, when this went through committee, this was an item that was removed from the proposal, and that what we've got so far is actually quite a bit. We've made a lot of progress in terms of the land access agenda that was coming from the growers through the Food Council and came up through the committee. It might be that this specific item, given that people in the council don't feel like they've had time to think about it and vet it, it might be better off referring this back to committee so we can have more time to work on this and figure it out. I'm sure that when people hear about our staff having concerns at 9:30 PM, it raises red flags for them. So I don't know that I'll make that motion necessarily, but it seems like that might be more of a consensus position that we could take at the council here, is referring it back to committee and.
Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. I just inadvertently clicked my remove, so thanks for the recognition. I wanted to clarify a couple of things that Councilmember Conno identified, and I appreciate her bringing this forward, but it, from my perspective, I'm looking at it from two things. One is the sale of the property and the permanence in that nature, and I'm not sure if it's consistent with our zoning plans that could allow commercial gardening in, you know, within a residential-zoned area. So I'm not sure that that's appropriate use of that. And I think the, what Councilmember Conno indicated was it does give, provide a great opportunity for commercial gardening to happen within the existing framework that's being proposed. It'd be done through a lease agreement, and those leases could be negotiated for different terms, for different time periods, for different rates. But the effect is we'd be creating a two-tier system carved out in a portion of the city. So although I appreciate Councilmember Conno's interest in expanding commercial gardening within the city and within her ward, the permanence of a sale of a property versus a lease agreement is contrary to what I think the objective of the, of the policy is that we're trying to pass. So I would, I'm going to be voting no on Councilmember Conno's motion, but I do think there are other ways to accommodate growers' interests within the existing framework.
Councilmember Fry?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to remind everybody that we're talking about non-buildable lots in Ward nine, which experiences, again, a lot of challenges with blight, crime and safety issues, because we have these idle lots that could be put to production to help our local food economy, create jobs, and increase our tax base. I also want to remind everybody that this was actually the staff recommendation for the entire city. It was a citywide policy, and each council member has decided to, I guess, address this differently. Some folks decided to take some lots off of the list, other council members decided not to participate in the policy altogether. I respect that. This is a motion to support small businesses, urban growers in our city who want to help us address the fact that these are non-buildable lots, that they want to turn into productive sources for the benefits of our community around health, jobs, the environment, and our local food system. I hope that you can support me on this one.
Councilmember Gordon?
Well, sort of referring it back to the committee, I think that I will be committed, even if I don't support this today, because I'm concerned it isn't quite, quite ready. It looks like it's not going to pass either. But I think this is something the Food Council will keep working on, and especially this idea of these unbuildable lots that are never going to be able to be sold for anything other than a sideyard or some community garden. I think it does totally make sense that we figure out a fair way, maybe citywide somehow, maybe we develop a pilot more thoughtfully for a limited number of lots, but we work with CPED staff and others, and I think with the Food Council, can't really speak for them, but would be willing to take this on and continue this work forward. And maybe as we see the success of the leasing and the commercial growers and the market gardens in residential areas and throughout the city, we'll start to realize that, oh, this is actually something that the residents in the neighborhoods would appreciate, and having this stable source of fresh food available in the neighborhoods makes sense. And hopefully, if this comes back, and when it comes back, we'll have a plan that is more acceptable to the majority of the council.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Conno's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay, that does not prevail. Then, on the Community Development Items four and five as amended, clerk call the roll. I'm sorry? Oh, Councilmember Fry, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one amendment that applies to both four and five, and perhaps addresses some of the sentiment of, well, all of the council members, as well as Gordon and Conno. And it should be in front of you. It's, that's directing staff to return to the CDRS committee after the 2016 growing season with a report on the implementation of the community garden and commercial garden policies. This report should include a description of the parcels being gardened by community and by market gardeners, and the parcels about which CPED has received inquiries from the public about gardening. So this, once the 2016 growing season is complete and we have real and raw data that we can then process and determine how to move forward into the future, we can start and continue to improve and better affect our policies. And so that would be a staff direction applying to, or, I'm sorry, it's a motion directing staff on both items four and five.
Councilmember Fry has a motion in front of us. Is there a second? Any discussion? Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. I wholeheartedly support this motion before us from Councilmember Fry. I think that every time we do anything different or expansive, that we need to return back to it to see the effectiveness of it, and so I think it makes a lot of sense for us to look back on this specific issue of community gardens and commercial gardens after the 2016 season, and so I very much support it.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Fry's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Any further amendments to items four and five from the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Fry?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Very, very briefly, I just want to highlight that this is a, this is a very substantial step in terms of urban agriculture. We're expanding leases. We have 770-some vacant parcels in the city. We're expanding the number of parcels that will ultimately be usable, and we're allowing commercial gardens to exist and be leased from city land. So these are huge steps. I really appreciate the council's support on them, as well as all of the work from several council members and the community at large, and the urban ag community as well.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Fry talked about the commercial gardens, but for myself, my interest is much more on the community garden side of things, and I think this is a great way to use vacant land that is on the north side, especially with regards to saving on costs. We know the numbers, and, you know, I think in some ways, you know, if we can curb those numbers, or minimize some of those numbers, that would be good for the folks up on the north side. And, you know, as the council member for Ward five, we have a lot of vacant lots, and, you know, I just think it's good for us to be creative in terms of how we move forward on this, just to, one, save the city money, but, two, also be helpful in providing for people the opportunity to grow food for themselves. And so I think it's a great step moving forward, but, you know, I'm also looking forward to, you know, the report that comes out after the 2016 growing season to see if we got it right, because if you don't get it right, we got to fix it.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the council taking this up, but I also wanted to take a moment to appreciate the work of the Food Council and the Sustainability Office and CPED and the staff there that worked on this. There was actually a group on the Food Council that probably spent two years working on this and food access. And those of you who have been around for a while will remember, this is called out in our Urban Ag Plan that we passed several years ago. So this has been a long journey that we've been on together, and it really, it took a concerted effort and very thoughtful work on the part of staff and also the Food Council to get us to this point. I think we wouldn't be here if it wasn't a recommendation that came from them, and I think that's, that's worth noting. We really do rely on our volunteers and our boards and commissions for a lot. I think this is also exciting, because it's going to be good for the city in many ways, and this not only will have the potential to improve health dramatically in the city by having more food available, but it also, I believe, will raise surrounding property values, because this will remove light from vacant land and put it into use, and now we'll also have an opportunity to provide some economic growth for individuals who are growing on it, at least certainly on the commercial lots. It's also actually going to save the city money, because when we have these lots being used by people and food's growing on them, we don't have to pay those holding costs,
I don't know that I'll make that motion necessarily, but it seems like that might be more of a consensus position that we could take at the council here as we bring it back to committee and.
Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. I just inadvertently clicked my remove, so thanks for the recognition. I wanted to clarify a couple of things that Councilmember Conno identified, and I appreciate her bringing this forward, but from my perspective, I'm looking at it from two things. One is the sale of a property and the permanence in that nature. And I'm not sure if it's consistent with our zoning plans that can allow commercial gardening within a residential zoned area. So I'm not sure that that's appropriate use of that. And I think what Councilmember Conno indicated was it does provide a great opportunity for commercial gardening to happen within the existing framework that's being proposed. It'd be done through a lease agreement, and those leases could be negotiated for different terms, for different time periods, for different rates. But the effect is we'd be creating a two-tier system carved out in a portion of the city. So although I appreciate Councilmember Conno's interest in expanding commercial gardening within the city and within her ward, the permanence of a sale of a property versus a lease agreement is contrary to what I think the objective of the policy is that we're trying to pass. So I'm going to be voting no on Councilmember Conno's motion, but I do think there are other ways to accommodate growers' interests within the existing framework.
Councilmember Frye?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to remind everybody that we're talking about non-buildable lots in Ward Nine, which experiences, again, a lot of challenges with blight, crime and safety issues, because we have these idle lots that could be put to production to help our local food economy, create jobs, and increase our tax base. I also want to remind everybody that this was actually the staff recommendation for the entire city. It was a citywide policy, and each council member has decided to, I guess, address this differently. Some folks decided to take some lots off of the list. Other council members decided not to participate in the policy altogether. I respect that. This is a motion to support small businesses, urban growers in our city who want to help us address the fact that these are non-buildable lots, that they want to turn into productive sources for the benefits of our community around health, jobs, the environment, and our local food system. I hope that you can support me on this one.
Councilmember Gordon?
Well, sort of referring it back to the committee, I think that I will be committed, even if I don't support this today, because I'm concerned it isn't quite ready. It looks like it's not going to pass either. But I think this is something the Food Council will keep working on, and especially this idea of these unbuildable lots that are never going to be able to be sold for anything other than a side yard or some community garden. I think it does totally make sense that we figure out a fair way, maybe citywide somehow. Maybe we develop a pilot more thoughtfully for a limited number of lots, but we work with CPED staff and others, and I think that the Food Council, can't really speak for them, but would be willing to take this on and continue this work forward. And maybe as we see the success of the leasing and the commercial growers and the market gardens in residential areas and throughout the city, we'll start to realize that, oh, this is actually something that the residents in the neighborhoods would appreciate, and having this stable source of fresh food available in the neighborhoods makes sense. And hopefully, if this comes back, and when it comes back, we'll have a plan that is more acceptable to the majority of the council.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Conno's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That does not prevail. Then, on the Community Development, Items Four and Five, as amended, clerk call the roll. I'm sorry. Oh, Councilmember Frye, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one amendment that applies to both Four and Five, and perhaps addresses some of the sentiment of all of the council members, as well as Gordon and Conno. And it should be in front of you. It's directing staff to return to the CDRS Committee after the 2016 growing season with a report on the implementation of the community garden and commercial garden policies. This report should include a description of the parcels being gardened by community and by market gardeners, and the parcels about which CPED has received inquiries from the public about gardening. So once the 2016 growing season is complete, and we have real and raw data that we can then process and determine how to move forward into the future, we can start and continue to improve and better affect our policies. And so that would be a staff direction applying to, or I'm sorry, it's a motion, directing staff on both Items Four and Five.
Councilmember Frye has a motion in front of us. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. I wholeheartedly support this motion before us from Councilmember Frye. I think that every time we do anything different or expansive, that we need to return back to it to see the effectiveness of it. So I think it makes a lot of sense for us to look back on this specific issue of community gardens and commercial gardens after the 2016 season, and so I very much support it.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Frye's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries any further amendments to Items Four and Five for the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, I just want to highlight that this is a very substantial step in terms of urban agriculture. We're expanding leases. We have 770-some vacant parcels in the city. We're expanding the number of parcels that will ultimately be usable, and we're allowing commercial gardens to exist and be leased from city land. So these are huge steps. I really appreciate the council's support on them, as well as all of the work from several council members and the community at large, and the urban ag community as well.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Frye talked about the commercial gardens, but for myself, my interest is much more on the community garden side of things, and I think this is a great way to use vacant land that is on the north side, especially with regards to saving on costs. We know the numbers, and I think in some ways, if we can curb those numbers or minimize some of those numbers, that would be good for the folks up on the north side. And as the council member for Ward Five, we have a lot of vacant lots, and I just think it's good for us to be creative in terms of how we move forward on this, just to, one, save the city money, but, two, also be helpful in providing for people the opportunity to grow food for themselves. And so I think it's a great step moving forward. But I'm also looking forward to the report that comes out after the 2016 growing season to see if we got it right, because if you don't get it right, we've got to fix it.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the council taking this up, but I also wanted to take a moment to appreciate the work of the Food Council and the Sustainability Office and CPED and the staff there that worked on this. There was actually a group on the Food Council that probably spent two years working on this and food access. And those of you who have been around for a while will remember, this is called out in our Urban Ag Plan that we passed several years ago. So this has been a long journey that we've been on together, and it really, it took a concerted effort and very thoughtful work on the part of staff and also the Food Council to get us to this point. I think we wouldn't be here if it wasn't a recommendation that came from them, and I think that's worth noting. We really do rely on our volunteers and our boards and commissions for a lot. I think this is also exciting, because it's going to be good for the city in many ways. And this not only will have the potential to improve health dramatically in the city by having more food available, but it also, I believe, will raise surrounding property values, because this will remove light from vacant land and put it into use. And now we'll also have an opportunity to provide some economic growth for individuals who are growing on it, at least certainly on the commercial lots. It's also actually going to save the city money, because when we have these lots being used by people and foods growing on them, we don't have to pay those holding costs. And we don't have to maintain and take care of those properties, because somebody else is out there doing it. So I look forward to hearing good things when this comes back in a year, and we can hear the progress of it.
Any further discussion on Items Four and Five? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Elections and Rules Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. The Elections and Rules Committee is bringing one item forward for today, which is a professional services agreement with Minneapolis Public Schools for Election Administration and Related Support Services. I move this item.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Elections and Rules Report. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing five items forward for approval today. The first items have to do with appointments, and actually, it's kind of noteworthy, because there's a significant number of new appointments to our Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council. Some of them are reappointments, but some of them will be new people who will definitely have big farm boots to fill or something like that. But I will read off the names of the mayoral appointments first, who are being brought forward for two-year terms, beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2017. Beth Dooley, Pacu Hang, Russ Henry, Devon Nolan, Carolyn Devaney, Allison Meyer, and Rul Islam. And also, there are eight appointees coming from the City Council for two-year terms for the same dates. Zoe Holoman, Jilia Pesada, Saba Andula Andulum, Lakora Bradford Kesty, Martin Brown, Journey Goslin, Magdalena Kaluza, and Latasha Powell. That's the first item. Second item coming forward from the committee is approving following appointments to fill unexpired terms on our Community Environmental Advisory Commission. These are just two. Jenna Grave, representing Clean Water Action, that's an environmental advocacy group, and Ricardo McCurley, a mayoral appointment representing residents. The third item is another appointment, and this is to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging, and that's the appointment of Deborah Jakawa. And the remaining two items are not appointments. The first is approving Neighborhood Revitalization Plan Review Guidelines, and this has to do with the expenditure of funds and directs the Neighborhood and Community Relations and Finance Property Services Staff that any neighborhood for which Phase Two funded contract is amended to remove funds or closed out with the balance remaining in that contract. This is a policy that will essentially create a review process if money hasn't been allocated within seven years. And the final item is authorizing agreements with three of our clinics to implement process and care improvements for hypertension and pre-diabetes management for priority adult populations in Minneapolis for up to 24 months, and that's Neighborhood Health Source, Hennepin County North Point Health and Wellness Center, and the University of Minnesota Community University Healthcare Center. And I will move all five items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam President. Wish to speak briefly on Item Four.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead, please?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chair Gordon. I serve on the NRP Committee for the City Council, and this was a pretty well-vetted public engage sort of process to first recognize how community groups have been spending their dollars and managing their dollars over the years, and I think there's some really good work by staff to show the pattern of expenditures and pretty consistent with initial policies that were outlined, and I think here brings further clarity to those patterns and a process by which, if there's any discrepancy from the policy of how monies are spent, I think this is a pretty well-vetted, community-supported outcome.
Any further discussion on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a brief comment on Item Two.
Okay, that would be fine.
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that was done by the committee and certainly the IGR staff and Gene Rehner in particular, and the legal department to do a lot of research to back the items within this rather complex subject matter and a rather robust and complex resolution that responds to these complex issues. Don't want to get into all the ends that are articulated within there, but I want to do, highlight the underlying premise. The underlying premise is a simple one. In complex, dense urban environments, you have a situation that is not typical for much of the rail system. It's much more risk, the risk is much greater. You have more people, you have very complicated land use patterns, and if we have a one-size-fits-all federal policy for degradation, we're going to be missing out on the best practices for safety of our citizenry. And so here, we address that as a simple principle with several ways we think we can meet issues and concerns that are identified in the community. Another principle in terms of how we get there that's baked into this resolution is the simple notion that we need to be backed by the federal government to allow local municipalities to do what they do best in terms of land use and projects that they are presented with. We, no project that goes before us typically, no matter who the party is, without sort of legal review, with the exception of rail companies. We want those exceptions not extended anymore. We want them to be ended, so we can do what we do for our citizenry, which is review projects. We're not here to stop projects. We review them and make sure best practices are in place before they move forward, not after the fact, but before the fact. And so those are some of the key sort of means to the ends that we desire regarding safety that are in here, let alone the enumeration of those ends. And then, of course, the simple principle that urban areas have higher risk, and we want that to be recognized. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the IGR Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have three items for approval. The first item is a police-mounted patrol boarding services contract. The second is the Downtown Council's DID Contract Amendment for Increased Summer Police Enforcement. And the third item is a DWI Enforcement Officer Grant Award from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety, and I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 15 items today for consideration. Item One is the 2015 Levy of Various Public Works Department Special Assessments. Item Two is the 2016 Uniform Assessment Rates. Item Three is the Solid Waste Recycling Services and Commercial Pricing Structure Change. Item Four is the Priorities Bridge Replacement List. Item Five is the Seven Street North Reconstruction Project and a variance request associated with that. Item Six is the Thirty-Eighth Street East Reconstruction Project, designation of a public hearing, and that public hearing will be January 19, 2016. Item Seven is the Third Avenue South Redesign Project, variance request associated with that project. Item Eight is the West Twenty-Ninth Street Reconstruction Project, and that is to approve layout and easements. Item Nine is the Northern Tributary 35W North Tunnel Modeling Project and Funding Agreement, and that's a funding agreement with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization to do additional mapping out of our system. Item Ten is the North Region Watershed Modeling Project and similarly, a partnership with the Watershed Organization to additional analysis of our system. Item Eleven is the Nicollet Mall Public Art Agreement Correction, and that's a correction of the data sent in the previous action. Item Twelve is the Impound Lot Improvement Project, and that's approving the concept plan for a reduced impound lot size and shift it to the easterly side, and authorizing Public Works and Finance and Property Service Department to proceed with the project implementation for reducing modifying the impound lot as described in the project. Item Thirteen is a bid for liquid carbon dioxide, and that's exceptional low bid from a supplier. Item Fourteen is a bid for Columbia Heights Mixing Chamber Hallway Painting Project, and that's also to accept a low bid from a supplier. And the final item is a bid for automated meter reading equipment, and that's accepting a single bid from a supplier, analyzing the cost, and it's consistent with past purchases. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to comment on Item Number Twelve. I realize that it's not the most sexy or exciting item on our agenda, but it has a meaningful impact to a very large number of citizens in the city of Minneapolis. This is with regard to finally consolidating and making some changes in our impound lot. In the old days, when I liked to drive, my car could drive itself to the impound lot it had been there so many times. I lived in the Loring Park neighborhood for 20 years. I represent a lot of people who live in rental property in very dense housing, and they have had a lot of experiences with snow emergencies and going to the impound lot. While I understand the importance of the city taking control of roadways for street sweeping and snow emergencies, if we have to tow someone's car, we don't need to treat them like a criminal in order to do it. And the situation at the impound lot up until now has gone downhill fairly fast. The fact that people could be in line for several hours without having access to bathrooms, the fact that they would have to wait outside in the cold, and currently, people are waiting in trailers. This has been an issue both in the Seventh Ward and in the Fifth Ward because of its land use. There are a lot of people who would prefer it not be in this location. I live in the Bryn Mawr neighborhood. That's the neighborhood where the impound lot is located. But I would say that for an impound lot, it's not a terrible use, and in fact, I think we're going to need to do some exterior improvements to the property. But from my point of view, how the neighbors look at it from the outside isn't anywhere near as important as how people deal with it from the inside. And I think we have a responsibility to people who are unfortunate and have their cars towed to make sure that their experience with us in the impound lot, although it's a bad experience, doesn't become any worse, because we want to punish you once you get there. So this is a gigantic move forward. I can just note that Council President Jackie Cherry Holmes, Councilmember Natalie Johnson-Lee, Councilmember Don Samuels, and now Councilmember Yang have all worked with me in an effort to try to get this capital improvement done. It is a long time coming, and I realize that it's not the most important thing that we deal with at the city, but I think it will have a real effect on a very large number of people.
Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to second or echo Councilmember Goodman's comments, although I do have to say, it's really important for everybody, or it seemed like it when we did community engagement, and people were coming from such different places and had so much, you know, some folks had history, some folks were just very angry, and I think, as I said before, this is probably the best compromise under the circumstances. And so I just wanted to thank Councilmember Goodman for working with us and vice versa to just get this to a place where everybody could be, I wouldn't say happy, but could be maybe okay with it or not too angry with it, and that's a good thing. So looking forward to this shrinkage, and I think it's going to help with a lot of things. And hopefully, I mean, that 11.2 acres that's going to be freed up, I mean, will be developed at some point. I mean, I just don't know when, but I'm hopeful.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. We have 16 items for your consideration this morning. The first is a personal injury claim. The next two items are workers' compensation claims. And the fourth item from the city attorney's office is the placement of attorneys and law firms on the legal services panel. We also have a contract with Data Systems Corporation for the Legislative Information Management System. Item Number Six is the acceptance of a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for the Creative City Making Minneapolis Project. Item Number Seven is the contract with the Minnesota Department of Commerce for the weatherization data conversion to public summary data. Items Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven are related to construction projects and contract closeouts for items related to the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item Number Twelve is tax exempt loans with U.S. Bank for the Nicollet Mall Project. Item Thirteen is the acceptance of gifts for the construction of Downtown East Commons. Item Number Fourteen is the contract amendment with Ginfinet Software for JR reporting software. Item Fifteen is the contract amendment with Kells Innovation for Mozart Data Collection System. And a final item is a contract amendment with N. Harris, which does businesses, Systems and Software, Inc., for the utility billing system. I'd like to move all 16 items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the entire Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
President Johnson?
three is denying an appeal for a nonconforming use application at the Carmel Mall. Item number four is the landmark designation of the Spokesman Recorder Building at 3744 Fourth Avenue South. Item number five is the landmark designation of the Anson Brooks Mansion at 2445 Park Avenue. Item number six is approving a rezoning application submitted at 1313 Chestnut Avenue South to rezone that property by adding an industrial living overlay district to an existing light industrial district to allow for an addition of an indoor theater and updating the zoning code accordingly. Item number seven is approval of the Loring Park rezoning study, noting that in seven, Part Two, there are several specific amendments to the study, keeping the zoning of the Basilica property, leaving the existing zoning at St. Mark's OR2, directing staff to return to the planning commission related to recommendations for Phase Two of this process within 12 months, and looking again at the small area policy guidance to make sure that it is consistent with what has come out of this rezoning study. Item number eight is approving applications related to the Belt Webber Park Library, as is item number nine, which is approving an application to rezone that property to allow for the library. And then items 10, 11, and 12 are all staff referrals, 10 related to snow storage, 11 for fence regulations, and 12 for the Linden Hills zoning overlay district. Item number 13 was a receive-and-file item, which was a...
Councilmember Bender?
Yes, Madam Chair.
We don't have those items on our...
Oh, those are not for council approval. I was just...
Okay.
I'll move items one through nine. I just wanted to...
All right, great, good. Sorry.
No, no problem. It's probably not necessary.
Keep going.
But item number 13 was a receive-and-file item related to the housing inventory that Long Range Planning and Housing worked on together, which I think will be a really exciting tool. So move items one through nine. I also want to note that item number one was to grant that appeal.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Liddon.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I had to comment on item number four, the designation of the Minnesota spokesman.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Thank you so much. I just wanted an opportunity to make some comments on this historic designation or local historic designation of the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder, which is physically located in the 8th Ward, and we're joined today by Tracy Williams Dillard, who is the owner of this business and the granddaughter of the founder. And I just wanted to make a few comments. The Minnesota Spokesman Recorder, we recognize with the resolution actually a few cycles ago, recognizing their 80th year as a business. They are the oldest black-owned business in the state of Minnesota. In 1934, this business was formed actually as the Minneapolis Spokesman and the St. Paul Recorder, two newspapers. Cecil Newman, who was the founder, said, "I didn't have enough money for one newspaper, so I established two." I've always appreciated that quote. And he founded this newspaper at a time of legalized oppression and legalized segregation, and it became the only African-American newspaper in the state of Minnesota. This newspaper has been a place for news that serves the African-American community ever since. And Cecil Newman himself was, without doubt, a complete political powerhouse. He worked with community. He worked with elected leaders. He was active in Washington, D.C. He advocated for change. He used the newspaper not only to share news, but also as a place for opinion and for advocacy. One example is an economic boycott that he organized through using the newspaper. And today, I just want to say, this seems especially meaningful to me that we are recognizing the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder. It is, of course, no secret that Minnesota and Minneapolis are the subject of international news right now, in a way that we wish we were not, but we are. And we have protests that are happening every day, talking about justice for a young man, a young black man, Jamar Clark, who was fatally shot on Sunday evening or Sunday morning by Minneapolis police officer. Our city has asked for independent investigations, and those are ongoing, but there are broader issues that the community is talking about, issues of institutional racism. And the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder has been in the center of that news, reporting on that news. And I just want to say, I appreciate you and your connection to the community, and I hope that you're in business for many, many years more. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
She's just having a quick cough in the other room.
Frye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar, and the first item is pursuant to notice, Councilmember Worsami moves to introduce the subject matter in ordinance amending the code relating to heritage preservation for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee, simplifying the required findings for certificate of appropriateness applications. That notice is given. Under unfinished business, Councilmember Reich.
Yes, Madam President. Wish to pass a resolution adopting the levy assessments for water and sewer service line repairs at the property located 1729 North Second Street and directing...
Councilmember Reich, I think your motion is to remove or delete. I'm sorry, that was the unfinished business. That was the unfinished business motion. Sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you. Reich moves to delete the agenda, water and sewer service at that address, 1729 North Second Street.
Councilmember Reich moves to delete from agenda, item one, under unfinished business. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under new business, Councilmember Yang has a motion to direct staff to create and support a workgroup task with identifying strategies for the marketing, sale, development, and use of government-owned lots in Minneapolis. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. You covered most of it. So I just wanted to just say that with regards to vacant lots in areas that are market-challenged, you know, I think we as a city need to really think about how we approach it, be creative in terms of figuring out what to put on them. And, you know, with this workgroup, we intend to try to figure out what we can do creatively to get some resolution that both saves us money and is of value to the community that we represent. So I ask for your support.
On Councilmember Yang's motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And item two, under new business, Councilmember Reich gives notice of intent to introduce at next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to carshare operators. That notice is given. Any announcements this morning?
Council President Johnson, I had to put my...
Councilmember Conno, just a second. Let me get back into my, into my screen here. Councilmember Conno. Oh, I'm sorry, you have an item under new business?
No, I actually wanted to speak on Councilmember Yang's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
New business thing.
Okay.
Of course, I am in support of it, and I voted for it, but I just wanted to briefly mention that I think this work is really important to connect to the work we're doing with our Corporate Facts Consulting Group to analyze how we've helped to get the city out of the foreclosure crisis and how we are connecting this work to the HUD complaint that is before us, as well as connecting it to conversations around protecting and continuing to promote affordability and accessibility for the residents of Minneapolis. And of course, as we just had a rigorous debate here around access to urban lots and around urban agriculture. So I thank Councilmember Blang Yang for bringing this forward, and I look forward to participating in the workgroup.
Any further discussion, then? Seeing none, announcements are in front of us. Anybody have any announcements? No, sir. I'm sorry. We do not allow, our council rules do not permit public comments at council meetings. That happens at our committee meetings, and the council meeting is held to act on committee recommendations. I'm sorry. Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn to be in order, and it's a motion to adjourn to a closed session for purposes of a security briefing.
Second.